Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women, and for all those who have passed away in our community.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Mr. Gahn.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
Here. The purpose of today's meeting is to interview candidates for the position of mayor. We do have a set of questions that council came up with. All the applicants are going to be offered a five-minute period to give their pitch on why they should be selected. Following that, there will be questions from members of council, possibly follow-ups from each individual member. I would remind the members of the public to be quiet during the interviews. If you need to have a conversation or make a phone call, please step out and show the respect to these applicants that they deserve. Our first applicant is Wayne Evans. And the floor is yours.
Good afternoon. So, first of all, I'd like to offer...
Mr. Evans, sorry. Before you begin, there are two questions that we're going to ask every applicant prior to their opening statement. We do know the answer to the first one, but we're going to ask it anyways. Are you a resident of the city of Scranton, and have you been a resident for the past year?
Yes, I have.
And secondly, if selected, would you run in a special election for a full term?
No, I won't.
The floor is yours.
Good afternoon. First of all, I'd like to offer a brief recap of my experience with Scranton City Government. Two years as a member of the Golf Commission, 10 years as a member of the Scranton City Planning Commission, two years as a member of the Home World Charter Study Commission, two years as a member of the Ethics Commission, three years as a member of the HARB, and five years as a member of Scranton City Council. That is a total of 24 years in service to the city of Scranton. Today, my focus will be on my time on City Council. On July 24th, 2014, I was appointed by the Democratic majority led by Bob McGough to a seat on council. A decision that was notable for the seismic shift away from partisan politics by making a completely nonpartisan decision based on the qualifications of the candidate. I'm very proud of my record for the past five years, and you should be too, because with very few exceptions, it is your record as well. Together, we watched closely over the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority and the monetization of the Scranton Parking Authority. Most importantly, we made the best and right decisions post-sale and monetization. Besides demanding accountability, we resisted the urge and pressure to use sewer proceeds mostly for pension funding by shifting priorities to paying down high-interest debt. As the Finance Chair for City Council, I was an early adopter for that decision. On the parking side, we helped foster a situation that went from receivership to a system that today is being rebuilt every day with cleaner, safer garages, and soon, we will add a new on-street parking system that will take us into the 21st century. This council demanded the creation of a downtown resident parking plan that will not only give residents a monthly discount, it will get more cars off the street every single night to allow the down-pound businesses to flourish with more available parking spaces. We also had the foresight and the fortitude to reduce the real estate transfer tax from 4.4% to 3.7%, creating an environment that continues to meet budget expectations while reducing the financial pressure on new homeowners in our city. We, as a council, played a vital role in creating the Scranton Home Ownership Assistance Program, taking money earmarked for the foreclosure registration program and directing it to SHAP to help new homeowners repair and update the exteriors of their new homes, improving their homes while increasing the values of adjacent properties. This unique partnership with NeighborWorks is so successful, it now has a waiting list. Another partnership with NeighborWorks is underway, the Beautiful Blocks Program. I discovered a similar program in Oswego, New York, and that became the model for Beautiful Blocks, where a group of neighbors compete for matching grants of up to $1,000, each for beautification blocks or projects on their blocks. We are bringing neighbors together and improving our neighborhoods at the same time. Of course, transparency should always be important. We brought Garanticus to City Hall, and now, each week, our agenda and backup information on important legislation is available to the public, online and for free. We created a three-year tax abatement program, and when that simply did not do enough to spur economic development, we led the charge for a 10-year, all-encompassing, citywide LERTA. We stand on the cusp of a dramatic increase in new construction and growth. And, of course, we had our idea sessions, and from there, developed an internship program for City Council's office. We have led the way, and we should be very proud of what we all have accomplished together. So, what does the future hold? Well, first of all, as interim mayor, I will not require on-the-job training. Quite frankly, we do not have time for that. On day one, we must begin to restore the trust and confidence of all of our citizens. So, during the next five-plus months, I expect to get things done, a lot of things done. In my first week, I will create the Mayor's Leadership Council, bringing to City Hall business and community leaders, along with key members of the administration, and hopefully, some members of City Council as well, to brainstorm about current and future initiatives. In my first week, I promised to begin to address the LIP situation, the NRS situation, and explore a new relationship with the Tax Claim Bureau. When you return from your August recess, we will begin to work on moving forward with the Walkability Study, the LIP Study, the expansion of the Downtown Historic District, a plan and strategy to restore this building, a shift to a payroll prep tax. We will continue to press for regionalization of stormwater management, the total revamping of the Quality of Life Ticketing Program, and finally, we expect to implement C Click Fix and ClearGov.com. And we will do all of that together. We are here today because politics run ran amok. I will commit to you again today that if appointed, I will not run in November, and within one week, I will dissolve my campaign committee and disperse my remaining funds to take away further the stench of politics from this process. You have a difficult choice to make, so I offer a little advice on how sometimes I might approach these moments. I think I have pretty good instincts for getting things done the right way. But at times, we all struggle with certain decisions. When I do, especially in the world of government and politics, I simply ask myself, "What would Bob McGough do?", and then it all becomes a little bit clearer. Thank you very much for the time, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Any questions?
Yes. Mr. Evans, thanks for coming out. Thank you for putting your letter of interest in. This is a big point, a big tipping point in our city. And again, like I said during our meeting last week, I appreciate everybody who stepped up to the plate to take leadership and help guide us right now when we need it really the most. And I've done my fair share of interviewing in business, and one thing I always want to find out first is where the person's heart is and where their motivation is for the job and task. So, what motivated you? Why would you like to be interim mayor? And what separates you specifically with the rest of the candidates that we're going to be talking to today?
Well, first of all, I guess my motivation is, you know, I have a track record of 40 years of community service, so my time in City Council is basically an extension of that, and this is an extension of that as well. We're in a tough spot right now. You know, we are basically, in some ways, just trying to keep the lights on, but I'm trying to look beyond that, trying to actually get more things done. But in my heart, I know that this is the time, this is the place for me to be. I feel, and as you know, we're all councilmen. If anybody is qualified to be in the position that the interim mayor is a councilman, for five years, I've lived, breathed this entire process. And we've had a tough five years, but we've got a lot accomplished. We saw ourselves through the worst economic times. We were on the brink of bankruptcy in 2014, and now, we're exiting Act 47. So, I believe in my heart that I have the tools, the intelligence, the integrity to move this city forward. And as you know, without question, as you all do, I love this city with all my heart.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Evans, for applying. The criminal information outlining the federal charges against the former mayor stated that unindicted co-conspirators associated with the city of Scranton, or city employees, to put it simply, were directed by the former mayor to solicit payments, campaign contributions, and other property for the benefit of the former mayor. Given this information, what, if any, steps will you take to not only identify any unindicted co-conspirator who is currently employed as a city employee, but also to hold them accountable for their illegal actions in order to begin to restore trust in city government?
That's a tough one, because as you know, the investigation is ongoing, and the co-conspirators have not been identified yet. So, we'll continue to work with the FBI. All the employees in City Hall should absolutely cooperate at all times. I have to tell you, though, I'm like you, Councilman Donahue, because I know how mad you are. I'm mad. You know, I'm mad about what happened, I'm mad about what was left behind, I'm mad about the political cesspool, and when these people are identified, they will be dealt with swiftly and quickly. And if we can, they'll be removed from their positions.
Okay, thank you. As you know, one of the major impediments to economic growth in the city is the archaic business privilege and mercantile tax. Both the recovery plan and exit plan include the recommendation of replacing the business privilege and mercantile taxes with a payroll prep tax, and that's only allowable to Act 47 municipalities. So, it has to be done this year, since we're scheduled to exit Act 47 next year. So, just what are your thoughts on replacing the BP and mercantile taxes with a payroll prep tax?
Well, again, I'm an early adopter to that process as well. I've been pushing for the payroll prep tax as soon as we first discussed it, I'm not sure how long, but three or four years ago. And as you're right, the business privilege and mercantile tax is a draconian tax that hurts businesses at every level. So, not only am I supportive of it, it has to happen this year, or into 2020, because the clock is ticking. Act 47, and we're going to exit it, and once we exit it, we can't do it again. The key to all this, by the way, is the school district. The city of Scranton is fully on board with the payroll prep tax, because it's broader, it's fair, and it will actually grow. The school district has not made their position known, so I would reconvene all the leaders of both the city and the school district, and once and for all, get a commitment from the school district to move forward on this.
Thank you. Mr. Gahn?
Thank you. Councilman Evans, if you're appointed, you will be the mayor of the city of Scranton for approximately five months. What do you plan to specifically accomplish in that short time period, and what are your goals and visions for the city?
Well, Councilman, as you know, in my opening remark, I laid out quite an extensive list of things that I would like to do, but maybe I can expand on a couple of them just before, to try not to repeat myself. One of the things I've been very vocal about is the failure of the Quality of Life Program, the ticketing program. There's 29 different items on that ticket. That is absolutely ludicrous. I want to reduce that to less than 10. The fines are $150 to $200. I want to reduce those fines to 25 or less. I also want to put a warning on there, so first-time offenders and property owners will have a chance to clean up their property before they're ticketed. We totally blew that program, and I want to get it back on track. Another thing, one of the things that I'm very interested in, and you all know this, is the Walkability Study. I think that's a game changer. Walkable downtowns across the country see increased tourists, increased commerce, increased traffic, and pedestrians, not necessarily cars, and that's a way for our city to grow and continue to grow. We have a lot of momentum happening in the downtown right now, and the Walkability Study will only enhance that. But if there's something in particular that you would want me to key on, I'd be happy to.
Councilman Donahue mentioned it a little bit, but from a city ethics perspective, like we were trying to get the Ethics Commission up and running, can you just talk about your stance and your views on that, and what you think needs to change inherently in City Hall to kind of get rid of that, the stench, as you called it? And what would you do in the next five months to start that process?
Well, the first thing I'd do would be appoint the fifth member of the Ethics Commission so we get this thing started, because that's been a delay from the very beginning, not having that last appointment. I was fully supportive of that. I served on the Ethics Commission, so I know how important it is. There's a culture in some portions of this building that have to be changed, and it's not just the employees, of course, it's the culture. And also, it happens to be part of the administration, which we found recently. I'm fully supportive of the ethics. Our new code has guidelines in there for people that run for office as well, so it's really extensive. It's based on what happened in Redding, and we were proactive in that, by the way. You know, we did that prior to any knowledge of what was happening with the mayor. So, I think that says a lot about what this council has been trying to do over the last five years. Other than saying I'm fully supportive, and I will put that, as soon as I can, I will take applications and get that fifth member in there, and we'll get the Ethics Commission started once and for all.
Thank you. And finally, can you please tell us what your experience is in managing budgets and supervising and managing employees? As you know, as the mayor of the city of Scranton, you're going to be in charge of a budget of roughly $110 million, along with managing dozens of city employees. In addition to that, are there any additions or cuts that you would plan to make to the 2020 budget?
All right. Well, first of all, I'm the Finance Chair of City Council, so I've been involved with all the major financial decisions over the last five years, and I work very closely, have a very good working relationship with the business administrator, which means a lot in this current environment. I'm a small business owner, on a personal level. I usually have roughly 12 to 14 agents that I oversee. I'll wait for that. But more than that, it's important, beyond just supervising employees, when you're a small business owner, it's all of that. It's understanding what fees are, what fines are, what it takes to run a business. You know, 80% of the growth in America right now is through the small business sector, so it's very, very important. But I also have experience in large business. I worked for 30 years for a Fortune 500 company. As an engineer, I oversaw $10 million budgets on construction in engineering, so I have a vast experience in the private sector as well as the public sector.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Two questions, and thank you for applying. First one is, what are your specific plans to promote economic development in Scranton?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, we're on the cusp of doing some great things. I really believe that. The 10-year LERTA, I think, is a game changer. And the reason it is, when we had the three-year tax abatement, it never got off the ground. And one of the reasons is, the city does a poor job of marketing those type of programs. The difference with this one is, we're partners with the Chamber of Congress. They committed to marketing the 10-year LERTA as much as they can, and we expect big dividends from that. So, that's very, very important. We used to pick winners and losers with the LERTA, now we're only going to be picking winners, and that's important as well. I think that in conjunction with the LERTA, we have the federal opportunity zones. That's another opportunity for us to expand our base, our growth in our new construction base. And the Walkability Study, as I mentioned earlier, is also about commerce. There's been studies showing that if you do a simple thing, like reverse a one-way street to a two-way, it increases commerce on that street by 35%. So, these are little things that could be done. Something that doesn't get talked about much, I mentioned it earlier in my opening remarks, is I'd like to expand the Historic District for downtown. Now, what that does do for you is allows you to finally market downtown Scranton as historic downtown Scranton, a major marketing tool for all the stores, all the shops, all the restaurants downtown, and it's something I think that we can't minimize. So, that's part of the things we can do on the economic side. Also, I mentioned earlier, the Mayor's Leadership Council, they're the kind of things that we'll be talking about in that group.
Thank you. And lastly, there's no question that Scranton's current refuse billing system is broken. What solutions would you support or oppose in regards to refuse billing and collections?
Well, as we know, the system's broken. It's been broken for a long time. We have over $16 million in delinquencies. So, do we try to repair the broken system, or do we scrap the broken system? I happen to be in favor of scrapping the system. What I'd like to see happen is, take those $16 million, package them as receivables, sell them to a collection agency for a lump sum. If we get $5 million or $7 million, we take that money, we're out of the business. Then, we take that money, and we use that as a basis for the first two or three years as we roll over from the garbage bill, you know, getting a separate refuse bill, to embedding that back in your taxes. The truth of the matter is, we're collecting the refuse fee at a rate of 70%. We collect property tax at well over 90%. So, right off the bat, we're increasing our collection rate. The other side of it is, on the refuse fee, we don't even know the amount of properties out there that we're not collecting the refuse fee for. You know, we have a rental registration program that has always struggled because they don't have the resources to really do what they need to do, but by expanding, you know, we expanded that, we tried, but we still don't know. All these apartments, all these landlords, they're not paying their fair share as far as the refuse fee is concerned. So, the best thing to do, in my eyes, at least look at that, vet that, see if that's the right way to go. If the numbers don't work, and it's going to be too difficult for the homeowner, we'll look at that as well. But everything's on the table, but that's one thing that I want to look at right out of the gate.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to our next applicant. If you want to come up and take your seat for the rest of the interviews, and we'll call on the next applicant.
Hi, good afternoon.
If you could state your name for the record, please?
John R.A. Tarantino.
And before we turn it over to you for opening remarks, two quick questions. Number one, are you a resident of the city of Scranton?
Yes.
And have you been a resident for the past year?
I'm a resident, never been arrested.
And secondly, if selected, would you run in a special election to fill the full remainder of the term?
No.
Okay. The floor is yours for opening comments, and then we'll turn it over to the council members for questions.
Okay, well, I'm honored to be here, to be considered. I have a big stake in Scranton. I moved here about three years ago. I have three properties in Scranton, and I love the city. It's a beautiful city, even his building is beautiful, and I see so much potential, but I really don't see it being used to the fullest. I'm not going to lecture you how to make the city better, but I will do my best to make it better. I work with you. I don't owe anybody anything. My allegiance is to the city, and to myself, and to the people. Everything I do will be strictly above board. I have an open-door policy, anybody can come in and talk to me. I understand it's a four- or five-month term, but even if I just open up your eyes and allow you to, a vision that I have for what the city could be, it may not get done, but it's a start. That's what I'm looking for, to be able to have Scranton become what it used to be, because I've been reading up on it, it was a glorious city, and it can, once again, be a glorious city. I love it. I live by the Moses Taylor Hospital. I could go out at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning. My wife could go out at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning. I feel safe. It's a safe city. It's got wonderful people. It's peaceful, and it just, it makes me feel good to say I'm a resident of Scranton. I love this city so much that if you read my letter of intent, I don't even want to get paid for the job. I'll donate that to some organization. I just don't want to get paid. I want to do the job because I feel it in my heart to do the job. That's about it. I mean, I really love this city, and I'm retired, I can devote all my energy, all my effort to making it better. I can talk to you, we can discuss things, I can discuss things with anybody. I don't have all the answers, but I may have some of the answers, even if I have one answer. And my job is, as a mayor, I believe, is to bring the city together and to work out the differences. I understand it's a fiscal crisis, but even that could be worked out. So, if there's anything else I can say, this is all coming from my heart. Nothing's prepared. I hope you understand what I'm saying, hope you understand what I feel, because I really feel this. And if I have to go down to Harrisburg every week to talk to the governor, I'll do that too. There's no limit to what I'll do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Perry, any questions?
Yes. Mr. Tarantino, thank you very much for putting your letter of interest in. I've read it over, and you know, you already answered the first part of my question, which is why you wanted the job, and you know, I can feel the passion and the dedication that you do have to the city, and I thank you for that. That being said, what do you feel like you bring to the table that separates you from the rest of the candidates that we're going to talk to today?
Okay, well, that's a good question, and I've lived in Pennsylvania. I lived in the Poconos, I've got a business in Dallas, I lived north of Pittsburgh, I lived on Long Island, which I guess you figured out from my accent, I lived in New York. And I see, the one thing Scranton has that these other places don't have is beautiful, affordable housing. The housing up here, they're like mansions, and if you put these houses in those cities that I mentioned, it would be two, three, four times the price. I think we should be drawing people here. It was up to me, I would start an investigation, maybe see there's a bus route that could go from Scranton to Philly with a stop in Allentown. Maybe get communities coming here. People are doing anything for their kids. They'll travel two hours if it's a better life for the kids, because I did it, and other people do it too. I see the neighborhoods, it's a clean city. It's clean, and the buildings, even this building, you look at it, it's magnificent. St. Peter's Cathedral, a few blocks away. It's gorgeous. This is what we have to offer. I have a vision to it with the baseball team, Scranton-Wilkesburg. They should be involved with the community, teach these kids something, let the kids look up to them.
Very good, thank you. And finally, what do you think the biggest challenge is going to be as interim mayor? And how do you plan on dealing with that challenge?
Well, the biggest challenge, I believe, will be to work with the city council and to alleviate the misconception people have that the government can't work for the people. This government should be working for the people of Scranton. They want to make Scranton, not me, not you, it's the people, and they have to feel like they're part of it. They should not be neglected, and this is what I see happening. It's like I drive through downtown Scranton at 4:00 in the afternoon on Friday, and I say, "Sunday morning? It's nobody home." You've got to get people walking, you've got to get volunteers, even get the kids involved. It's a wonderful city. How many times can I tell you that? I just love it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Donahue, any questions?
Yes, thank you for applying. The criminal information outlining the federal charges against the former mayor stated that unindicted co-conspirators associated with the city of Scranton, or city employees, to put it simply, were directed by the former mayor to solicit payments, campaign contributions, and other property for the benefit of the former mayor. Given this information, what, if any, steps will you take to not only identify any unindicted co-conspirator who is currently employed by the city, but also to hold them accountable for their illegal actions in order to begin to restore trust in city government?
Well, if they did something that's against the law, if we have the attorneys, attorney generals, I'll work with the state, I'll work with the state police, I'll work with the city council. No, you can't. If people have your trust, your word is your bond. You don't live up to your trust, I have no compassion for you. Whatever happens to you should be done to the fullest extent of the law. Like I said, I have no allegiance to nobody, nobody. I basically live by myself, I stay by myself, I'm happy. I want to see people held accountable for their actions. You just can't shake it off. I'll do everything I can to make sure these people are brought to justice.
Thank you. One of the major impediments to economic growth in the city of Scranton is the archaic business privilege and mercantile tax that are levied on gross receipts. Both the recovery plan and the exit plan include the recommendation of replacing the business privilege and mercantile taxes with a payroll prep tax, but that's only allowable to Act 47 municipalities. You know, we're on track to exit Act 47 in the next year, so that has to be done this year. Since, so what are your thoughts on replacing the BP and mercantile tax with a payroll prep tax?
Again, with taxing the people, it's every time I turn around, you can't keep reaching to people's pockets. Or maybe something else could be worked out, because from personal experience, I had a leaking roof in a house that I wanted to get it fixed, I had to. But I called contractors, and they don't want to come out when I tell them it's Scranton. I say, "Why not?" They say, "You got to pay for a permit, you got to fill up..." They say you got to pay for a permit, they got to fill up permit papers, and then they got to wait for the permit to be completed and given to them, and it's a hassle. People have a bad, sometimes you have a bad feeling when it comes to working in Scranton. That's got to stop. We're going to make it friendly for people to come in, we're going to make it inviting. Like I said in my letter, this should be a destination city, not just the electric city, this should be a destination city. That's what I hope to make it.
Thank you.
Mr. Donahue, any questions?
Yes, thank you. If appointed, you will be mayor of the city of Scranton for approximately five months. What do you plan to specifically accomplish in that time period? What are your goals and your vision for the city?
Okay, in those five months, I'm hoping to reach out to the baseball team. I'm hoping that they can work with the city to have some exhibitions, have the players meet the kids. I'm also hoping to have a moratorium, maybe like I said on these permits, these building permits, maybe have a moratorium, see how that goes. You know, see, people improved their house, they're improving Scranton. Things holding back when you got to pay extra money. You hit with a bill for fixing a roof, not hit with a bill for getting a permit to allow you to fix the roof. That doesn't sound like the American way to me. I'm also thinking about, like I said, investigating maybe marts, maybe trailways, maybe a private bus line. We'll start a bus route from Scranton to Allentown to Philadelphia. People will commute if they find a better mousetrap at the end of the bus route, and I believe that mousetrap is Scranton. I believe we should get the kids volunteering in the schools, maybe they could help with trash days, or you know, clean the yards or something, or maybe visit other people that are locked up, you know, in our homes. This is just a few of the things I believe in.
Thank you. As mayor of the city of Scranton, you will be in charge of a budget of roughly $110 million, along with managing dozens of city employees. Can you please tell us what your experience is in managing budgets and supervising or managing employees, and what additions or cuts would you plan to make to the 2020 budget?
Okay, well, I used to have a restaurant in Dallas, I was on a tight budget, employed about, you know, from eight to 10 people. I cut back there as much as I could, unnecessary spending was stopped. I ran a taxi garage, I had fire workers there. In New York City, talk about regulations, oh, it was, and the same thing, you just kept, you know, getting hit with bills and bills and bills, and I cut back where I could over there. As far as cutting back in Scranton or the budget, well, I'd have to see it first. I just can't make a blanket statement, I'm going to cut everything, I have to see if there's waste, it's got to stop. My decisions are based on business, not on feelings, not on emotions. That's how I operate. If I make a decision based on the business aspect, I don't have no regrets.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. I don't have any questions at this time, so we appreciate you coming in, and we're going to go on to the next applicant.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Good afternoon.
If you could state your name for the record, then we'll have two quick questions and turn it over to you for an opening remark.
Sure, my name is Brad Foley.
And two quick questions, are you a resident of the city of Scranton, and have you been a resident for the past year?
Yes, I have.
And if selected, would you run in a special election to fill the remainder of the term?
No.
The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank council for the opportunity to apply for this job. Again, my name is Brad Foley, I live in the Green Ridge section of Scranton. I'm a retiree from the federal government. I currently am a employee of Pennsylvania State University. I teach, I'm an adjunct instructor up there, and I teach business, okay? The courses I have taught before are management, human resources, negotiation, marketing, and every other core course that they have up there, all but accounting. So, what you'll expect from me is some honesty, some integrity, and I will do my absolute best at the job for the next five months. I realize right now that you're not going to change very much in the next five months. What you'll get from me at the very end is some recommendations on maybe an organizational structure that maybe would be more efficient. You'll get some recommendations to the next mayor on maybe who should be here and who should not be here, okay? Also, what you won't get from me is any sweeping changes, okay? You will not see me try to reinvent any wheels or anything like that. I consider myself sort of a bridge between our time right now, our next five months, and the next mayor who will fill out the ex-mayor court rights term. So, I am a business person, okay? I am not a politician, I promise you that, okay? I have no ambition of being in politics after this five months, but what I do bring to the table, and I believe that I think the city needs this, is a business lens, okay? I know we have a business manager here, but I think that we need maybe some more business experience out here, and again, I'm not a politician, although over the years I have politicked in my jobs with the federal government, okay? Prior to this, I worked at the highest levels within the Department of Defense, okay? I've worked for the Army Material Command, and I've worked for the Department of, I worked for the Secretary of Defense, okay? So I have some awards from them and things like that, but I have worked for them, and again, right now, I'm a teacher at Penn State University, and I'm an adjunct instructor. I think that's pretty much it. Feel free to ask any questions that you feel comfortable asking.
Councilman Perry, any questions?
Yes, Mr. Foley, thank you, thank you very much for putting your letter of interest in for this position. Again, I can't tell you how much that means to the whole city to have this many people that are actually willing to step up to the plate. That being said, whenever I interview someone, and as a businessman yourself, I'm sure this is one of the very first things you ask somebody, you want to know what their motivation is and where their hearts at. What made you decide to put pens to the paper and actually send in a letter of interest for this position? And secondly, what do you bring to the table specifically that separates yourself from the other candidates that we're going to talk to today?
Okay, well, one of the things that separates, I'll start from the very end, okay? And if I miss a question, Mr. Perry, let me know.
The floor is yours, you're fine.
But what I bring to the table is I have good social responsibility. I understand what I'm supposed to say, what I'm supposed to do, okay? I have good emotional responsibility as well, from a standpoint of I don't lose my cool, okay? I can handle those kind of things. What sets me apart from other candidates? Maybe my enthusiasm, okay? I look forward to new challenges, and this would certainly, certainly be a good challenge for we have here, okay? Again, my honesty, my integrity, and I'm sure every single person in the other room, the other 15 candidates certainly have the honesty and integrity that they have. What motivates me? The idea of doing something good. I really appreciate the opportunity to do this, but what motivates me certainly is not money, okay? I don't have any, I don't owe anybody, and nobody owes me anything either, so, but money does not motivate me for anything like that, so, but I think just the idea of doing a good job, being part of a transition, that's what I would look for myself as a transition person and a bridge to the next mayor. That's what kind of sets me apart, I think.
Thank you. And finally, I'm sure you follow the news, and you're familiar with our city, obviously you are for showing interest. What do you think our biggest challenge is right now, and how do you plan on dealing with that challenge, once you become interim mayor?
Okay, the first thing I think that the city lacks is respect, okay? Of all the places, I mean, of course, people talk, okay? People give you advice and all those kind of things, but I think that the reputation of the city is really in peril, for lack of any other thing. How I would address that? I think I would ask the staff and the people that work here, instill some professionalism into them, okay? I think that's what they lack here is professionalism. I walk through the halls here, I don't see anybody dressed for the occasion of working, the privilege of working for the city, so I think that's what I would do, okay? Yeah, I think I would instill professionalism. Again, five months is not a very long time. People might think it is, my grandson, who I was with this morning, he thinks five months is an eternity. He thinks one week is an eternity, but five months really is a very short period of time, and I think that's what the city needs right now, okay? Also, one of the things I think that they need quite a bit of is automation. There's a lot of things here that aren't automated, okay? I know the minutes are automated, they're put online and things like that, but I think some of the things could be automated a little bit more than they are, and I'd like to see some, at least the ball will start rolling in that direction.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you very much.
Mr. Donahue, any questions?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Foley, thank you for applying. The criminal information outlining the federal charges against the former mayor stated that unindicted co-conspirators associated with the city of Scranton, or for lack of a better term, city employees, were directed by the former mayor to solicit payments, campaign contributions, and other property for the benefit of the former mayor. Given this information, what, if any, steps will you take to not only identify any unindicted co-conspirators that are currently employed by the city, but also to hold them accountable for their illegal actions in order to begin to restore trust in city government?
Well, first of all, I'd let the FBI do their job, okay? Of course, I would not want one of those people, whoever they may be, to work for the city or work for me if I was the one that was selected. I certainly wouldn't want that. I'd want proof, of course, okay? But no union can, you know, protect somebody that has done something that wrong, for lack of any other word, okay? So, did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. The bottom line is, I don't think that they should work, I know that they shouldn't work for this, not that I don't think, I know they shouldn't work for the city.
Okay, thank you very much. One of the major impediments to economic growth in the city is the archaic business privilege and mercantile taxes. So in our recovery plan and in our exit plan, they give the recommendation to convert those taxes into a payroll prep tax, and that's only available to Act 47 municipalities. So given the fact that we're on track to exit Act 47 in 2020 next year, that would have to be done this year. What are your thoughts on, you know, replacing the BP and mercantile taxes with the payroll prep tax?
Well, I've read the recovery plan that Mr. Ambrose came up with, or his company came up with, and I find that there's no problem with what they have to say, okay? I think that you have to follow a plan, no matter what it is, and I believe that that plan is working for now, right now. You know, for the city to be in a business of, for example, sewer authorities, I think that's more of a private industry type event, okay? That may not be everybody's opinion, but that's at least mine. I don't think the city belongs in those kind of businesses, okay? But from a tax standpoint, I'd have to support what the recovery plan brings.
All right, thank you. Mr. Donahue, any questions?
Yes, what do you plan to specifically accomplish in the next five months if you're appointed as mayor of the city of Scranton, and what are your goals and vision for the city?
Well, what I have planned to accomplish, number one, I would take some advice from council on maybe some project that can be finished within the next five months. I don't think that, you know, again, five months is not a very long time, okay? What I'd like to accomplish is, number one, I mentioned before, that professionalism within the building and within the city government, I think that's lacking, for lack of any other words than that. And professionalism, how would I attack that? First of all, I'd make sure every department chair, I think there's 15 of them, would wear a tie, okay? That comes to work, would look the part, okay? That was one of the first things I would start off with, was being the professionalism. Like I mentioned before, I think that the automation, certain functions within the organization, whether it's internal or external, I believe they could be automated in the next couple of months, or at least a program and a plan ahead for that, okay? What else? Again, organization, I think to take a look at the organization from an outside view, and I think that what I would bring into there was a nice outside view from it. Again, not being political or any ambition of being political, I think that's kind of a plus for this next five months, at least for that, okay? So, but that's what I would try to accomplish in the next couple of months, and also, I would like to bring out some recommendations for the next, whoever that may be, Democrat, Republican, Independent, whoever that may be, and I'd like to bring out some recommendations on how I feel that it should work. Whether they take them or not is up to them.
Thank you. As mayor of the city, if you're appointed, you'll be in charge of a budget of roughly $110 million, along with managing dozens of city employees. So can you tell us what your experiences in managing budgets and supervising employees, and a look towards the 2020 budget that you will be crafting along with the business administrator? What additions or cuts would you plan to make?
What kind of cuts?
Additions or cuts to the 2020 budget.
Well, I'll start with the first one, what's my experience of working with budgets? I've always worked with budgets, working for the federal government, that was kind of my job, was work with budgets. We've gone up to probably forty or fifty million dollars per year, probably never 110, but probably forty or fifty million dollars a year I've managed. The people, you know, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Donahue, too many questions, I think, but just said, what's my experience of working with budgets? I have worked with budgets, and it's an allocation of what resources you're going to use, and those budgets went for materials, went for labor hours, went for travel, and numerous other things, office supplies and things like that. So, our budgets were, in the government, or at least where I worked, were pretty close to like fifty or sixty million dollars, so I have some experience working with that. It seems like I always balanced, you know, we always had a little bit of extra money at the end of the year for bonuses and things like that, but that's a whole different lifetime.
Thank you very much, thank you.
What are your specific plans to promote economic development in Scranton?
The first thing I would do is I'd take a walk around personally, and I would always take somebody with me. I've never gone anywhere without taking somebody with me, but I would take somebody with me, and I'd go around to some businesses. But I would take somebody with me, and I'd go around to some businesses out there and find out what's working for them and what's not working for them. And I'd ask. I mean, again, not being part of the economic development world out there, but I would ask what people work. What would make them want to be a business here? And I'd definitely entertain people that would come and that want to invest in here. And I would also...it all depends on the budget, of course, but I would attend some conferences outside of the city, find out what's in northeastern Pennsylvania, and make recommendations back to them and kind of promote. And that's kind of really what you have to do, is you market yourself, okay? You market yourself to other places. And what I would do personally, I would definitely look to counsel for guidance on some of these things. I'm not...you know, I don't have every answer for everything, and I...nobody does. So, but I don't have the answers, but I would look for help in those kind of things.
And secondly, there's no question that Scranton's current refuse billing system is broken. What solutions would you support or oppose in regards to refuse billing and collections?
I don't personally think that $300 is too much to throw your garbage out, personally, okay? Some people do, okay? But I would let the courts decide whether it was legal or not legal to charge 300. I think it was 175 before, okay? And now it's 300. And if you pay it early, it's 270, and I always pay mine early. But I just don't think that that's too much to pay, okay? I think our garbage men, I'll call them garbage men, our sanitation workers, our DPW workers, whatever words are the right words to use, I think they do an excellent job, okay? Every Tuesday, my garbage gets picked up, and that's kind of what I care about, okay? It's a cost of doing business. It's a cost of living in the city, okay? You can live in Moscow, and I lived up there for 20 years, actually, Warren Brook Township, but I lived in Moscow for those years, and we paid by the bag, okay? It added up to $300, no matter what. So I kind of think that $300 is a fair assessment for the services that are provided. And you just can't give things away. I don't believe the city needs to give things away, but I think they have to have value added to it.
Well, thank you very much. We thank you for your time and for coming in. This will conclude our interview. We'll bring in the next applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name for the record. We'll have two quick questions for you, and then the floor of the ears for opening.
Stephen Tunis.
What was that again? I'm sorry.
Stephen Tunis.
And two quick questions. First, are you a resident of the city, and have you been a resident for the past year?
Yes.
And secondly, if selected, would you run in a special election to fill the remainder of the term?
I will.
I want to ask my colleagues, do we want to continue with the interview at this point? Because I know we said that we were not going to entertain applications from those who wanted to run. All right, we'll continue the interview. We did state, though, for candidates to be considered, we would like them not to run for the remainder of the term, but the floor is yours.
I, you know, I just see, as being a resident for, well, my whole life here, things come and go, and the way that this city has become really needs to change. It really needs to get a step in the right direction. It needs to get back to being for the residents, and everything with infrastructure, anything like that, with budgeting, the way it pretty much is, is where's all the...where's everything go? You know, we have crumbling streets, we have the older generation that needs to leave because they can't afford their houses anymore because of the way taxes and everything else is. You know, younger generation, yeah, they're fine with working down here, but they're living out of town. You know, they'll live right next door, dumb war troop, it's better for them. You know, they...nobody wants to really move back into the city, once they get out. And it's just, it's time to change. It's time that we're here for what really matters, the residents.
Mr. Perry, any questions?
Yes, well, thank you very much for putting your letter of interest in. As I said, to all the candidates, it really means a lot knowing that there's this many people that want to step up and actually do the right thing. That being said, why did you step up? Why do you want this job? And what do you think that you bring to the table that the other candidates that we talked to today, they're not going to have?
I mean, I stepped up really to try to get something...it needs to be changed, all right? So, fresh face, listen, I'm not really into politics that much, but there's a plus side there. I also, I'm a small business owner, so when it comes to budgeting, yeah, let me tell you. You know, it's a lot to do with budgeting, especially when you're a one-man show. And, you know, knowing different ways and how to get different things done throughout the city, that's not going to cost enormously, because there's multiple ways to do everything. And that's what needs to happen.
Thank you. And then, also, I'm sure you're in tune with the city and what's been going on lately. What do you feel our biggest challenge is? And as interim mayor, how would you deal with that challenge?
I think it's gaining the trust of the residents again. You know, gaining the trust and showing them that we're actually here for them. And, you know, we all got to work together. So there's no...there's no sides. It really needs to be everybody on the same team. And, you know, that's how it has to be anymore. We can't keep going, we're this party and that party. We're here for the residents, that's what we need to do.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Donahue, any questions?
Yes, thank you for applying. The criminal information outlining the federal charges against the former mayor stated that unindicted co-conspirators associated with the city of Scranton, or city employees, for lack of a better term, were directed by the former mayor to solicit payments, contributions, and other property for the benefit of the former mayor. Given this information, what, if any, steps do you take to not only identify any unindicted co-conspirator who is currently employed by the city, but also to hold them accountable for their actions in order to begin to restore trust in the city government?
Yeah, I mean, they're...the investigation needs to go further, you know, and I'm sure it is, and it will be. And it needs to be a fresh start. We need to get all the corruption out, and it's going to take some time, because, you know, there's little things that are going to pop up here and there throughout the next year or two, or even, you know, further down the line. But it needs to...it needs to get taken care of, because, again, nobody's, you know, they're all looking out for themselves. So that can't happen anymore.
Okay, thank you. One of the major impediments to economic growth in the city is the business privilege and mercantile tax. Both recovery plan and exit plan include a recommendation of replacing both with payroll prep tax, but that's only available to Act 47 cities. The city's on track to leave Act 47 next year, so that would have to be done this year. So what would be your thoughts on converting the BP and mercantile tax into a payroll prep tax?
I mean, if it makes sense to do that, then that's what we should do, you know? Sit down, look at everything, figure out how it's going, and see how it is for the citizens, and see how it is for, you know, all the small businesses and, I mean, bigger businesses that are around, but see which is best for them.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gawn, any questions?
Thank you. If you're appointed, you'll be mayor of the city for approximately five months. What do you plan to specifically accomplish in that time period? In other words, what are your goals and your vision for the city?
My goals, to, well, restore trust back for the residents and sit down, figure out with budgeting, figure out what we could do to get better, you know, with infrastructure, everything else in the city, and just budgeting, really. I mean, we need to figure out a budget so we're not in the hole so much, and, you know, try to get everybody that they want to come back.
Thank you. Can you please tell us what your experiences in managing budgets and supervising employees?
I have been in...well, I'd been an assistant general manager as well years ago at Snow Mountain, it was called, when they took over. So, you know, I had employees, every day I had to go through with interviews and get everything and figure out with budgeting for all of our, you know, I mean, figure out budgeting for everything in the restaurant field that I was in charge of. And then I progressed into working as a...up at Harley-Davidson also, and I still, there I had to work, you know, be there for the customer. Figured out with inventories, make sure all the inventory was correct and everything was in check, led her into being a small business owner myself. So, you know, I'm every day making sure the inventory is to a T and making sure everything's there, because you got to keep track of all your funds.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. I don't have any further questions, so this concludes the interview. We appreciate you applying, and we will call the next applicant. Thank you.
Thank you.
You state your name for the record, please?
My name's Jay Walsh.
And two questions before we turn the floor over to you. Are you a resident of the city of Scranton, and have you been a resident for the last year?
Yes, I have.
And secondly, if selected, would you run in a special election for a full term?
Excuse me?
If selected, for the five-month position, would you run in a special election for the two-year term?
Probably.
The floor is yours.
I don't have anything to say.
Okay. Do any council members have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Walsh, thank you for taking the time to put a letter of interest in for this position. And what I'd like to note from everybody is, where was your motivation? Where's your heart? Why did you want this job? And what do you bring to the table that the other candidates that we're going to talk to today aren't going to have?
Well, I don't know the backgrounds of all the candidates that came today. I do know Bobby Weber, but I have a lot of experience in sales, marketing, and I think I love this city. I've lived here for probably forty-five to fifty years of my life. That's about what I got to say.
Okay, and finally, what do you think the city's biggest challenge is? And as interim mayor, how do you plan on dealing with that challenge?
Well, first of all, I think that the fiscal responsibility, I would like to bring in a outside forensic auditor to basically get a firm grasp on what the city's finances are, because I'm not sure what they are.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Donahue, any questions?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for applying. What are your thoughts on replacing the business privilege and mercantile taxes with a payroll prep tax?
Well, I, again, I think it comes down to fiscal responsibility and getting a firm grasp on where the...what the forensic accountant comes up with. So I would be projecting something that's not within my expertise at this particular moment.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gawn, any questions?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Walsh, if you're appointed, you will be mayor of the city for approximately five months. What do you plan to specifically accomplish in that time period? What are your goals and your vision for the city?
I think my goals are...I think the Scranton Times had a list of people that were...and what they were looking for in their mayor. I think I meet that criteria. And my goal is specifically to understand the fiscal responsibility and where the city sits right now. Without that, I'd be a ship without any sails.
Thank you very much.
I don't have anything further, but thank you for applying. This concludes the interview, and we'll call in the next candidate. Thank you.
Okay.
If you please state your name for the record?
James Freethy.
And then I'll have two quick questions, and then we'll turn the floor over to you. The first one is, are you a resident of the city of Scranton, and have you been a resident for the past year?
I am a resident, and I couldn't hear that second question.
And have you been a resident for the past year?
Yes.
And secondly, if selected, would you run in a special election for the remainder of the term?
I will.
The floor is yours.
I realize that this is to fill out the term of the last mayor that's in this town. So a lot of the programs that have been started and a lot of the sanctions that have come from Harrisburg are in place. So I'm going to be able to work with the team of the managers of the different departments. And I also realize that I have to be flexible, I know that I'm honest, and I have to be committed. One of the things that has come to my mind, I live over in the West Scranton area, and I get up every morning early and I walk, and I see a lot of litter that's all over the place. And one of my endeavors is to form a group of men and women and kids.
James Freethy.
And then I'll have two quick questions, and then we'll turn the floor over to you. The first one is, are you a resident of the city of Scranton, and have you been a resident for the past year?
I am a resident, and I couldn't hear that second question.
And have you been a resident for the past year?
Yes.
And secondly, if selected, would you run in a special election for the remainder of the term?
I will.
The floor is yours.
I realize that this is to fill out the term of the last mayor that's in this town. So, a lot of the programs that have been started, and a lot of the sanctions that have come from Harrisburg are in place. So I'm going to be able to work with the team of the managers of the different departments. And I also realize that I have to be flexible. I know that I'm honest, and I have to be committed. One of the things that has come to my mind, I live over in the West Scranton area, and I get up every morning early and I walk, and I see a lot of litter that's all over the place. And one of my endeavors is to form a group of men and women and kids in the four sections of Scranton, and equip them with garbage bags, and brushes, and shovels, to enable them to determine what work is like. I understand, and I see a lot of youth walking the streets, and I realize that school probably was just out. So that would be good for them to do, to learn how to work. When I was a child, I was involved in the Boy Scouts and the Junior Pilgrim Fellowship of the church I go to, and the Senior Pilgrim Fellowship, and to earn merit badges, I had to be willing to do things. I do believe that this city is, has beyond the point of a turning point. They are back in a positive direction, and I'd like to keep it going that way. I'm honest, I'm forthright. I don't know if you've read the letter that I sent to a woman that is involved in the election system. And a couple of times, I was a minority inspector over at Jackson Heights, and in order for them to hire me or choose me, I must have, you know, fit the bill. And I was thinking about this yesterday, and I'm going to say it today, because it came up. If God wants me to be in this position, then it's His will. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Perry, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. I'm sure you're well in tune with what's going on with the city of Scranton. What do you feel our biggest challenge is right now? And as interim mayor, how would you deal with that challenge?
Our biggest challenge is to show some honesty, and in that, that would be reflected in what I had said that I would like to have done. Young people, people that can do what I said that I was, I came up with with the litter And maybe some recruitment from the Boys Club, maybe some recruitment from the churches, and some recruitment from the Boys and Girl Scouts. Like I've said, I'm going back and to earn a merit badge, I had a complete archery, or rifle, or basket weaving, or anything like that, but, and at that time, there was a YMCA. I don't know where it was located. I know there was one on North Washington Avenue, right up here. But I know some people that go to the Dunmore Y to swim and exercise. So to go to the schools, to have publicity, to get young people involved, and in a work ethic, and it's probably all up to who the administration and that's in place now to have that word passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freethy. That's all I have, Mr. Rogan.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes, thank you for applying. One of the major impediments to economic growth in the city is the archaic business privilege and mercantile tax. Both recovery plan and exit plan include recommendation of replacing that tax with a payroll prep tax, but that's only allowable to Act 47 municipalities. So we're scheduled to leave Act 47 in the next year. So what are your thoughts on replacing the BP and mercantile taxes with the payroll prep tax?
My thoughts are, that's a move in a positive direction. I know this, that I used to live on Sumner Avenue in West Side. My father worked for the phone company, and he bought a house up in Clark Summit in the sixties, and my mom is still in that house, and she's still being taxed by the city of Scranton, and that's a burden on her. So to eliminate that is a good thing. To replace the monetary need, that would come from, probably from Harrisburg, after they put another sanction on the city, to come up with an honest number of delinquent properties and out-of-town landlords, as they are determined or called, to have an honest evaluation, and to get, I would believe, the money that's owed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gawn?
Yes, thank you. If appointed, you will be mayor of the city of Scranton for approximately five months. What do you plan to specifically accomplish in that time period, and what are your goals and your vision for the city?
Well, a couple of the accomplishments, well, hope to get, is what I had just spoke about. And with that, in practice, I believe many people that have an open mind, anyway, will see that this city and this administration means business. There was a big negative whack when the mayor had to leave office. And to get the confidence back immediately, this is what I know, immediately is to show them, in the nice weather, the energy of the youth, and the determination of the youth, and the objective of, you know, cleaning up the litter. You know, I come in to Scranton once in a while on the expressway, and there's a sign there that says, "Welcome to the city of Scranton." And I don't know what shape that's in, that sign is in, so maybe it needs to be repainted. Maybe it needs to be illuminated. But I'm really going for the first aid. The first aid is stop the bleeding, and along with that first aid, is to show many people in different areas of Scranton, North Scranton, West Scranton, East Side, South Side, that there is some work, some visible work being done in the neighborhoods. And the neighborhoods, like I said a while back, they used to have YMCA's. And bring the neighborhoods back, and bring it back through the work and toil and cooperation of the city and the maintenance, and supplies, that I believe, like rakes and brooms and shovels and bags, and illuminated vests, reflective vests, that can come as a one-shot deal before 2019 is over with.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
Sir, good afternoon.
Thank you.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Colonel Joseph Albert.
You're welcome.
I don't have any further questions, so this will conclude our interview. We have a couple of questions before we get into your statement. Again, we thank you for applying, and we will call in the next applicant.
U.S. Army retired.
Will I hear one way or the other?
I'm also a Scranton businessman.
You will. Mr. Albert, we have two questions before you begin your presentation.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, do two more. The first question is, are you a resident of the city of Scranton, and have you been a resident for the past year?
Yes.
And the second one is, if selected, would you run in a special election for the remainder of the term?
No.
Okay. The floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you. As I said, U.S. Army retired, I'm also a Scranton businessman, who's been involved with the local insurance agency that's been operating here in northeastern Pennsylvania for over a hundred years. I assume you've all received a copy of my resume from your clerk's office. When I filed, I delivered five copies, but I was told they only needed one, and the office would duplicate everything, recollete, restaple. I suppose I should be honored to be here and questioned regarding my ability to be named mayor of the city of Scranton under Section 607 of the Scranton Home Rule Charter. But I must tell you, in reality, I'm sad and disappointed that this is how we have to fill the office of mayor of the city of Scranton. I was told by the city clerk that I would have five minutes to offer an opening statement, and I thought, in doing so, that my statement probably should be like a lady's skirt, long enough to cover the subject and short enough to keep interest. I know you're aware of the perspective and the recent column from the Times Shamrock publication, Chris Kelly, who promoted this process, but one missed the quote. This week, we will appoint Councilman Wayne Evans. Remember, you read it here first. Evans will serve until the end of the year, when he will win a special election and take over and finish the two years-plus-left-in-court rights reign of error, unquote. Gentlemen, this fears a reaction. Courage is a decision. But remember, the city that forgets its past has no future. And I've been in this city from a population of over 125,000 down to less than 65,000, and from being a leader in the Commonwealth of Scranton, producing two of its greatest governors. It's now the laughingstock of the state, northeastern Pennsylvania, and the country. That's now how it has to be. In fact, I admire Noah. You remember the man that sailed on a wooden boat with two termites? There's a lot that can be done, but it's time to think outside the box and put partisanship aside. Because as Winston Churchill once said, "An appeaser is one who feeds a crocodile, hoping it eats some last." You've seen what has happened with the Scranton School District, where some of you have come from. But now you have the responsibility to do what has to be done. Gentlemen, I return the floor to you for questions.
Thank you. Mr. Perry, any questions?
Yes, thank you for your letter of interest, Mr. Albert. I do appreciate that. From knowing our city and seeing it from the outside looking in, what do you feel the city's biggest challenge is? And as interim mayor, how would you deal with that challenge?
I see seven significant, several significant challenges. The first is to restore some credibility, integrity, and ethics as the face of the city. Whoever you appoint as mayor has to get out, communicate to the public, and present a new image for the city of Scranton. It's not going to be done overnight. It's not going to be done in four years. It may take two terms, whoever's the next mayor of the city. But the city can rebound, recoup, and become a significant contributor to the state of Pennsylvania and the United States of America.
Thank you. Mr. Rogan, that's all I have.
Mr. Donahue, any questions?
Yes. The criminal information outlining federal charges against the former mayor stated unindicted co-conspirators associated with the city of Scranton, or city employees, for lack of a better term, were directed by the former mayor to solicit payments, campaign contributions, and other property for the benefit of the former mayor. Given this information, what, if any, steps would you take to not only identify any unindicted co-conspirator, but to also hold them accountable for their illegal actions in order to restore trust in city government?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, sir. Say that again.
Given this information, what, if any, steps will take, will you take to not only identify any unindicted co-conspirator who is currently an employee for the city, but also to hold them accountable for their illegal actions in order to begin to restore trust in the city?
I think whoever you choose as the mayor has to step forward and start exercising leadership. He has to work very closely, or she, whoever you choose. They have to work with the council. This is a team effort. It's not one person. The city is comprised of people. It's a team. Council has a responsibility, and the mayor has a responsibility, and they also have, hopefully, the time to work together and share information, share ideas, and work for the betterment of the people they were elected to serve.
Thank you. One of the major impediments to economic growth in the city is the business privilege and the mercantile tax. In the recovery and exit plan, one of the recommendations is to replace those taxes with a payroll prep tax. So what are your thoughts on doing that? And it would have to be done this year, because it has to be done under Act 47, and we're projected to leave Act 47 in the next year, so that would have to be done this year. So what are your thoughts on that?
I don't really have any, to be perfectly frank with you. I'd have to really seriously take a hard look, consult with legal counsel, consult with council, city council, and hopefully come to a conclusion and make some recommendations.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gawn, any questions?
Yes. If you're appointed as the next mayor, what do you plan to specifically accomplish in the next five months, and what are your goals and your vision for the city?
Well, hopefully take Scranton out of the cesspool of ridicule and give it some credibility. Give it a permanent face, positive for the community, for not only its citizens, but for the county, and as I said, the state, and hopefully the country. They'll pick up on it.
Thank you. Can you please tell us what your experience is in managing budgets and supervising employees, and what additions or cuts would you plan to make to the 2020 budget?
I wouldn't make any at this point, and it would be strictly a matter of sitting down, meeting with them. Hopefully, I would meet with every city employee that's currently on the city payroll, find out what they think. It's going to take time. It's not, this is not going to be resolved in thirty seconds, twenty-four hours, or even a month, or two months, or three months. The best whoever you appoint, they can do, is change the image of the city of Scranton.
Thank you. What are your specific plans to promote economic development in the city of Scranton?
I don't have any specific plans.
Fair enough. And what solutions would you support or oppose in regards to the refuse billing and collections for the city?
I don't have any solutions right now. It's a matter of, if you think outside the box, and you decide to do something nonpartisan, and you pick someone who you think is a leader... for not only its citizens, but for the county, and, as I said, the state, and hopefully the country. They'll pick up on it.
Can you please tell us what your experience is in managing budgets and supervising employees? And what additions or cuts would you plan to make to the 2020 budget?
I wouldn't make any at this point. And it would be strictly a matter of sitting down, meeting with them. Hopefully, I would meet with every city employee that's currently on the city payroll, find out what they think. It's going to take time. This is not going to be resolved in 30 seconds, 24 hours, or even a month, or two months, or three months. The best whoever you appoint they can do is change the image of the city of Scranton.
What are your specific plans to promote economic development in the city of Scranton?
I don't have any specific plans.
Fair enough. And what solutions would you support or oppose in regards to the refuse billing and collections for the city?
I don't have any solutions right now. It's a matter of, if you think outside the box and you decide to do something nonpartisan, and you pick someone who you think is a leader, not a follower, who will give direction, some problems will be solved, and some problems will not be solved.
We appreciate you taking the time to interview with us. This will conclude our interview. We're going to call one more candidate, then we'll take a 10-minute break. Thank you, Mr. Albert.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Could you state your name for the record, please? We'll have two quick questions, and the floor will be yours.
Very good. Tom Welby.
And, Mr. Welby, two questions. Are you a resident of the city of Scranton and have you been a resident for the past year?
Why, yes, I am.
And secondly, if selected, would you run in a special election for the remainder of the term?
No.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. And thank you all for the heck that you all have been through this period. I'm sure you agree with me that the city of Scranton is rich with a great number of residents, businesses, and city employees that care greatly about this community and were and are greatly disappointed in what's occurred in the last several months. I personally know many employees and department heads that are still in a state of disbelief and just want to move forward, doing the right thing, and to show everyone that the city of Scranton is full of honest, hard-working people that genuinely care about our community. And while there are several issues that I would like to see resolved or implemented, I think it's important to get the input of our employees and our department heads on many of those issues. Among the items that I think need to be addressed as soon as possible are the contract with Northeast Revenue, and whether or not the decision to not work with the county on the delinquent collections was influenced in any unfair way. I'd like to work with the Licensing, Inspection, and Permits Department to resolve what appear to be many ongoing issues. Regarding the amount of time that it takes to apply for and receive a permit to do work in the city, the city's website says that it will take one to two business days with possible exceptions. You all know, because I know it also bothers your heart as well, how long it takes some people to get a permit, as much as 30 days to get a permit to fix a leaky roof. As I understand it, under the structure of the department right now, the permits can only be signed by one person, that being the director. I think that the requirement should be met that would allow for a second person, at least a second person, to be able to sign for them. Also, we have to find a way to work with the union to put an inspector on the streets on weekends. It's common knowledge to contractors or alleged contractors that if you do any work in the city of Scranton on Saturday or Sunday, you do not need a permit. There are more roofing jobs done in the city of Scranton on Saturday and Sunday than all of the weekdays combined in any given month. And besides the likely lack of permits for that work being done, the bigger, or at least equally concerned, is the quality of the work that might be done by many unlicensed workers. And there's also, with all of us, a genuine fear that the work would be shoddy and unsafe for the resident. Another concern I have is that I believe that there are many grant opportunities that are not being pursued in the city, leaving money on the table that will go to other communities if we don't apply for them. I'd like to work with your primary grant writer and Mr. Bolzoni to grow that department and to bring in added revenue to our city. And also to work with our federal, state, and county officials in that area. Personally, in my present position, we meet regularly, that being the chiefs of staffs for the governor's office, for the congressman's office, for the senator's office, for the state senator's office, from the county, and also with all of the other state representatives. We sit and talk about opportunities that can help move the region forward. I'd like to see the city a little bit more involved in that as well. Also, communication is important for obvious reasons. I would like to see regular meetings with the mayor, with one or two members of council, and perhaps the city clerk, every two weeks for the discussion of what progress and obstructions we are experiencing that affect our city and the taxpayers. I'd also like to see the establishment of a business council composed of small and large business representatives that would meet monthly to discuss opportunities and discuss roadblocks. Another issue that has come up recently that I believe must be dealt with immediately, and it's the security for this building. With all due respect, it is irresponsible for this building to not be a security building. It's 2019, and we're at least 10 years lax on this incredibly important issue. There are other issues that I think must be dealt with that are equally important, not the least of which is taxpayer relief for our residents. People that work in the city and businesses that want to exist or grow in the city. We are not going to grow our city if we don't find a way to extend tax relief to our residents and to our businesses. Some of the other issues that are equally important are blight. I've spent a great deal of my life obsessed about blight issues and graffiti issues. I spend a lot of my time going around personally, helping to clean up that time. I didn't speak much of myself as far as my involvement, but I can tell you that by my actions, I am involved in the community and a lot of community organizations, and I respect the time that I have passed.
Mr. Perry, any questions?
Yeah. Mr. Welby, thank you for taking the time, not only to come here today, but submit your letter of interest. As I mentioned to all the candidates, it's just overwhelming. It's just a positive spin that we're there's this much goodwill and people willing to step up to take leadership in really one of our biggest times of need, to entrust government again. Well, what I'd like to know from everybody is, what was your motivation for submitting that letter of interest? And what do you bring to the table that separates you from the other candidates that we're going to interview today?
Good question. My motivation is what has driven me for all the volunteer work that I have done for the most of my life. And I actually retired from WEP-TV eight years ago. And at that time, my intention was to do public service work. And I did it for almost a year when I got talked into going to work for Representative Marty Flynn in his office. And the intention there, first was to be part-time, and second was to be able to use that office to work for him and also to serve the people. And we, there, get a lot done, helping people. I, as Tom Welby, can't call an agency or a state department and get an answer. I can't get anybody to pick up the phone. I call them, and I say, or I write to them and say, "It's Chief of Staff, State Representative, from State Representative Marty Flynn's office." I get an answer almost immediately. And we can help a lot of people. So it's terrific that I actually get paid for helping people. But some of the other things that I've done as former chairman and still board member for the last 15 years for Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority, and we're responsible for building a lot of trails and helping to grow the city in a lot of different ways other than just the trails. 15-year board member for the Visitors Bureau, which I resigned from that last year, being a former board member of Outreach EOTC, a board member of Neighbor Works. And there's executive director, volunteer for First Friday Scranton, and a few others. It's, I guess, the same nature that many of us, you included, have. You run council to help the city and to help our people. I feel the same way. As far as separating me from the other individuals, I can't really speak to that. I think everybody, the 16 people that have stepped up for this position know what they're getting into, and for them to have the heart and the willingness to do that and sacrifice a lot, you know, I couldn't say what separates me from that, other than I thank them for stepping up as well. It's not going to be easy for them for the next five months, what they have to deal with in their personal life because of the decision they chose.
Thank you. And finally, I know in your opening statement, you talked about many of the different issues and challenges that we do have in our city right now. What would you prioritize to be our number-one issue, our number-one challenge? And how would you deal with that as interim mayor?
Boy, it's almost like picking something out of a barrel, because there are so many that are equal. I think probably finding a way to tax relief. Finding a way to lower and change the structure of the wage tax is a good first step. And also, for the same thing of the business mercantile tax. If we don't continue to bring businesses into our city, we have to do something. The other part of the tax thing is finding a way to at least tax the private enterprises that exist in nonprofit properties is something that has to, we have to find a way to do that. So tax relief is number one. It's hard to say. It's just one no.
You're not going to get too many complaints on this side with that answer. Yeah, no, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Welby.
Mr. Donahue, any questions?
Yes, just to touch on taxes quick. One of the major impediments to economic growth in the city is the business privilege and the mercantile tax. As you're aware, under the amendments to Act 47, you could, municipalities are given, Act 47 municipalities are given the opportunity to institute a payroll prep tax as an alternative to the business privilege of mercantile tax. But that would have to be done this year, since we're on track to exit Act 47 next year. So what are your thoughts on replacing the BP mercantile taxes with the payroll prep tax?
Absolutely for it. And I know that there's a lot of work that the city has done to get to the level at which they can present a proposal that would allow for that. And it's a fair way to better balance and better structure of that tax. It's unfair to an awful lot of businesses that have a higher gross, the taxes on the gross, not on the net of the business. It's just totally unfair. And that would be a step in the right direction, a serious step in the right direction for our businesses.
Thank you. And also, lastly, the criminal information outlined in the federal charges against the former mayor stated that unindicted co-conspirators associated with the city of Scranton, or city employees, were directed by the former mayor to solicit payments, campaign contributions, and other property for the benefit of the former mayor. Given this information, what, if any, steps will you take to not only identify any unindicted co-conspirator still employed by the city, but also to hold them accountable for their illegal actions in order to restore trust in the city?
That's tough. You would think that anybody that knowingly was involved in what has happened in the last, I was going to say several months, but it appears that it's the last many years, that they would step up and know what they did and resign. I mean, there's no gray area there that they should be doing it. Until all the indictments are come out or all the information comes out, I don't know how we could make them admit and own up to what they did. But anyone that took anything to influence a decision should not be working or serving the city of Scranton in any way. Black and white just should not be here and should have the decency to leave.
Thank you. Mr. Gawn, any questions?
Yes, thank you. If appointed, you will be the mayor of the city of Scranton for approximately five months. What do you plan to specifically accomplish in that time period? And what are your goals and your vision for the city?
Well, of course, the tax issues, although it's going to be very difficult for somebody that's in there for five months. I know that, and you know that. That's a big road that's in front of that person. And I think the next person that succeeds, the temporary mayor, is the one that has the serious weight to carry. But there are some things that can be done, I think, almost immediately. And that is the improvement in how we are doing in the application for grants in the city. I forward, from State Representative Marty Flynn's office, we get notifications from Harrisburg of any grant opportunities that are open. And with a description of what the grant is available for, what it can be used for, whether or not matching funds is required, and that can be an obstacle for applying something. Clearly, we can't apply for it if we don't have the money for the matching funds. But a lot of them don't require matching funds. And those projects that we send the opportunities over for include storm drainage problems, water runoff problems, traffic problems, paving problems. Just about every aspect of our life, it covers it. And it also includes what the deadlines are for applying for it and all the links for which to apply for it. And because of, I believe, staffing shortage, manpower shortage, and a time-constrained shortage, we don't apply for it as much as we need to apply for. And leaving that money on the table is something that can be dealt with immediately. Obviously, it can only be dealt with for those that apply in that window. But I think the expansion of that department, or a coordination within that department to improve it is one of the top things. And one of the things that can be accomplished, I think, with the approval of council and finding the money to do it in a relatively short period of time.
Thank you. Can you please tell us what your experience is in managing budgets and supervising or managing employees? And what additions or cuts would you plan to make to the 2020 budget?
I forget for a millisecond there that that's part of the job. I served as the sales manager for WOLF-TV, Fox, and also our internet department, and had a staff with me that I directed at that time. Also, prior to that, I worked for a place down in Wokesbury called The Station Complex from '80 to '86. And I was the advertising and promotion department manager, and also was responsible for a lot of the entertainment that we hired that ranged from Dizzy Gillespie to Todd Rundgren and Billy Idol and a lot of other acts. And with that, we had a staff of 135 people that I wasn't directly responsible for their primary jobs, but I was directly responsible for anything that affected the entertainment portion of those jobs. And worked with a lot of people and had success in working with them. And you work with those people as you would and should. That is, treating them with respect, treating them with dignity, and expecting to be treated the same. As far as cutting costs, that would take a serious sit-down and to look at everything. We clearly have to cut costs. It's difficult for us to raise more money. We can't raise taxes, so we have to cut costs. And sitting down with Mr. Bolzoni and council and department heads and finding ways to reduce those costs, it has to be done.
What are your specific plans to promote economic development in Scranton?
Meeting with the business leaders that I would hope that everybody would agree that that's something that would be okay. That is, monthly meetings with a business community, from a small auto body shop to our corporations that exist in the area. And doing it monthly and talking about things that are going right, things that are going wrong, and how we can improve those situations. And the same thing with developers, sitting down with developers in the area and discussing those same ways. And then sitting and meeting with our federal, state, and county departments and talk about funding and ways we can bring in more cash. The RACP programs that the state has available for the development, the tax credit programs that the state has available for development. They could be pursued, in my opinion, a lot greater than they are right now.
And finally, there's no question that our current refuse billing system is broken. What solutions? Well, we thank you for coming in and for applying. This will conclude our interview. Council's going to take a five-minute break, and then we will wrap up the last six interviews. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.